Remember the thousands of lives that have been lost right here in the county of Virginia over the years with gun violence? And I thank you for being here today to be advocates for common sense gun legislation. To remember the 32 precious lives that were lost in Virginia Tech in 2007, the 12 precious lives that were lost in Virginia Beach on May the 31st, the nine-year-old precious life of Markeith Dixon, who was, as the mayor said, was nine years old, out with her friends, playing in a park, expecting to have a good time and go home to her parents that night, and her life was senselessly taken away from her. Thank you for being here for her, for the over a thousand, let me repeat that, over a thousand Virginia lives that were lost to gun violence in 2018. I don't know about you, but I'm here today to say enough is enough. Thank you, no more excuses, no more waiting until the next tragedy. Those who say that nothing will work, they want to keep doing nothing. Those who say it's too soon, I say, and you say, and we say, no, it is too late. For those who are here today to share their thoughts and prayers, I say thank you. But I'm asking for something else today. I have brought our legislators back to Richmond today. For votes and laws, when I say why are we here? I want you to say, for votes and laws, why are we here?
Votes and laws!
Why are we here?
Votes and laws!
Why are we here?
Votes and laws!
This is about saving Virginia lives. Enough is enough. Let's get to work.
We know that there were a number of elected leaders here present with us today. We just wanted to give some individual information.
All right, where, here we are, folks. All right, he just got done giving his remarks. That was Governor Northam. Folks, that's the racist governor of Virginia. They call him Governor Blackface for a reason, but what's just happening here today? What's, what's that?
Can we look at this or your mail screen?
Oh, no, we can't, I don't think we can, hold on just a minute, folks. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we want to be able to see your comments and everything.
Guys, first of all, share this video everywhere. Where we are right now is ground zero for gun control nationwide, nationwide. 50 feet away is Governor Blackface Northam. We're live in Richmond, Virginia, on behalf of our members and supporters of the American Firearms Coalition, to tell this legislature and this governor that gun owners are not going to roll over and go, here, take our freedom, take away our ability to protect our children and our loved ones and our family. We're not going to do it, gun owners aren't going to do it. There's a lot of gun owners here standing in opposition to this stuff. I have stood up in a lot of legislatures and fought for gun owners in a lot of states, and I have seen very few, look at these people, radical leftists. This lady, she walks up to me, she goes, oh, you're a bunch of two-year-olds, a bunch of crybabies, a bunch of blah, blah, blah. And I said, why don't you back down, lady? And once she goes, can't you even talk to me without being mean? They're social justice warriors to the core. They hate freedom, they hate the Second Amendment, they hate it. And we're in Virginia of all states, beautiful Virginia. And they want to destroy one of the founding principles of this beautiful country. If you take away the guns, who's going to protect my children? Who's going to protect my children? That's your responsibility. Yeah, it's my responsibility to protect my children. I love my boys, I'm going to fight to protect them.
This area is permitted for this rally? Could we just have you step over to the other side of the fountain?
Other side of the fountain?
Yes, sir.
Other side of the fountain?
All right, as is typical, we'll, we'll roll on over there.
Other side of the fountain, sir.
Unreal. Well, we gotta leave, we gotta leave, we can't be around, they're probably all going to start crying.
Buddy, but you're just making a bunch of stuff up.
Ow, hey, look at this. That right there is what you call a soy boy. We call that in the Midwest? You call this soy boy. Leftist, radical leftist. Do you have any children?
I do, sir.
Yeah, why would you give up your ability to protect your own children? Seems pretty stupid to me.
I didn't say anything about my ability to protect my children.
Really, we have a list of like 36 gun control bills that they're trying to pass here that would destroy the Second Amendment. They want to destroy the Second Amendment.
All right, Ben, I'm going to try to get this level.
Unreal. Moments ago, we saw right down there on the street, buses and buses, a Bloomberg-funded anti-gun radicals from the Brady Campaign. For all of you in the Midwest, that's the purple shirts. We don't have the purple shirts, we have the red shirts, red shirt radicals in the Midwest. We have the purple shirts here, the Brady Campaign, Moms Demand Action is here, Every Town for Gun Safety. These are Michael Bloomberg-paid-for stooges. They didn't come in here in their work trucks like the gun owners did. They rolled in here in Bloomberg billionaire-funded Northfield lines or whatever, the massive buses bringing them in here to attack the Second Amendment here in Richmond, Virginia. And guys, frontline, frontline. Newspaper Richmond Times-Dispatch right here. Normant, now that's Tommy Normant, that guy's the Senate Majority Leader, Republican. Remember, Republican, Republican, Republican Senate Majority Leader Tommy Normant is filing gun control bills. And only moments ago, anti-gunners rallying over there were praising Republican Senate Majority Leader Tommy Normant for caving and sponsoring his own gun control bills. That's why we're here to fight. They have a one-vote Republican majority in the Senate, and Tommy Normant is already saying, we give up, we give up, we're not going to fight this.
And let's make no mistake about what actually just happened here. For those of you who are just joining on, we just streamed live Governor Tom, uh, Governor Tommy Normant, Governor Northam's gun control speech. What he's trying to do here is trying to get his base back together. This is the guy who is infamous for wearing blackface. He's got racist roots from way back. What he's trying to do here is co-opt the gun control movement to fire up his base so that he can keep some of his political capital. As you guys all know, we've talked about this before, but a lot of the roots of gun control are based in racism. So what we're seeing here from Governor Northam is simply a return to his roots.
And don't, don't forget, just in case, this is your, this is the same governor who said after babies are born, you should be able to kill them way after they're born. This is the same governor we're talking about, and he's standing right over there.
Literal, he said, well, once the baby is born, we take him to a comfortable place, we make sure they're comfortable, then we make a decision on what happens to them after that. This guy is an animal. Is an animal, he's a dog. But here, but here he is trying, sitting there pretending that he cares about the dead as they name off a list of people who were killed in gun-free zones all across the state of Virginia.
Guys, I want you to do this right away, please, if you can. First, share this video on your Facebook page. Share it, share it, share it. This stuff has got to get around. As you can see, there's nobody else standing here in Richmond, Virginia, calling down the thunder on these radical leftist politicians. These videos need to get out there. Share the videos. If you know how to start a watch party, start a watch party. Start a watch party, get your friends in there, get everybody in there. Let them see what we're facing, because even if you don't live in Virginia, this is the nature of gun control politics. What happens here, again, they have a slim Republican House and a slim Republican Senate. I'm talking like one-seat majorities in both chambers, one or two seats tops. If they pass gun control here under Republican legislatures, wherever you live, your Second Amendment rights are not safe. I don't care if you live in Ohio, if you live in Minnesota, it's the same story. It's the same story. So what happens here will be used against our Second Amendment rights in every state across America. So it is imperative that everybody stand up and fight this gun control. Guys, Aaron, do you have those phone numbers? We need to call the Senate Majority Leader, call his office. Again, Northam's going to do what Northam's going to do. He's a radical, he's an animal, just an animal too. He's the very definition of suit and no soul, suit and no soul. So we got to call him, we have to call the Republican leadership. These are the guys who are in charge of whether or not this stuff passes. So I need to grab a pen and paper, grab a pen and paper. I need you to call these numbers right here. The name is Senate Majority Leader Tommy Normant. And his phone number is 802-698-7503. Or call him at 757-259-7810. Tell him to stop doing what Republicans are doing all over the country, and that is stabbing gun owners in the back when it comes to gun control. Call him right away.
Well, that's the, that's the big story here, guys. As Ben showed you, here's the, here's today's Richmond Times headline. It doesn't say Democrats file gun control bills. It doesn't say Governor Northam launches gun control attack. It says Republican Normant files bills to ban guns in city buildings. So the real story is, I mean, this is, this is a huge part of it, but the real story also is that building right across the street, where all these Republican lawmakers are meeting right now, especially in the Senate chamber, trying to decide what kind of a nasty stab-in-the-back deal are we willing to cut. So it's not just the governor, it's not just Bloomberg that we're fighting with here, it's Republican Senate Majority Leader Normant who filed this gun control bill. And what it would do specifically is ban any firearm, permit, no permit, doesn't matter, on any government building. Of course, these are taxpayer-funded properties, and here's the money line. The governor's, the governor's comment is that he is very pleased to see Normant's legislation and have it come to the table for serious consideration. So we have this out-of-control gun-grabbing governor who is now praising the Republican Senate Majority Leader for his efforts to pass gun control. And if you guys have been watching this page, if you've been watching Minnesota gun riots, if you've been watching Iowa gun owners, if you've been watching Ohio or Georgia, you know, you know how pathetic and how weak most Republican leadership teams are. I mean, Minnesota may be one of the worst. But now with a special session going on in the eyes of the entire nation watching Virginia, these Republicans come out there and give the governor what he wants, which is a gun control bill.
For those of you who don't know this yet, today, their session was adjourned until today. This is a special session. This is called for the sole purpose, they're not talking budget bills, they're not discussing funding for this or that. This is a special session for the sole purpose of passing radical gun control. And it's not just the ones Aaron's talking about. We got a whole list here, guys. They want, they want to pass red flag gun seizure legislation. They want to institute a one handgun a month. You can only buy one gun a month.
Go back to the old days, it was one gun a month, Virginia, one gun a month.
One gun a month. They want to totally gut Virginia's preemption laws, okay? They want to make it so that any city, anywhere, every little town can pass any gun control they want to pass, okay? They, they want to increase all these different things from misdemeanors to felonies. If you leave a gun out where your 17-year-old child could, could see it, you can get a felony charge in Virginia, a felony charge just for having a firearm accessible to your 17-year-old, basically, adult. That's what they're trying to pass here. Guys, the list goes on.
Statewide gun registry, they want to have universal firearms registration, every single firearm that is owned by law, body, and citizens in Virginia in a government database. You know, we're here in Richmond right now. I can, I can assure you that all the thugs in downtown, near the hotel we were at last night, as a matter of fact, you know, these guys aren't registering their firearms, they're not going to comply with gun control. This only impacts law-abiding gun owners. This does not stop crime. If it, if it did, it would have stopped the last 20 mass shootings. But almost every single time, with no exception, those individuals got their firearms after having gone through a background check. Background checks don't stop crime, but you know what, as we know, Ben, that's not their intention. Northam's intention, his desire, his goal is to get you on a list. They want to know where the guns are, they want to know who owns what. Because that way, down the road, maybe this fall, if they, if they lose these chambers, don't forget, guys, if you're not from Virginia, this is election year. The general election is in November, this November. These people have a one-seat majority. Hell, they had to flip a coin to break a tie, tie here in 2017. So if they lose this chamber, Ben, these people could go from a universal gun registration bill as early as January to a confiscation bill. And we know that Northam would do it if he could.
I mean, this guy's the worst. He's literally one of the worst there is. And if you could look, for those of you just hopping on here, hundreds and hundreds of anti-gun Bloomberg-funded radical leftists are here at the Capitol in Richmond, Virginia, calling on radical gun control, calling on Governor Northam and Senate Majority Leader Tommy Normant to pass all this gun control and totally gut, stuff, and destroy the Second Amendment rights of all Virginians. This is Virginia for heaven's sake. This is a beautiful land, it's a beautiful place.
Well, it's a bastion of freedom for our country. And I mean, if you're watching in Iowa, if you're watching in Missouri, if you're watching in Ohio, by gosh, no, if they can do it here, they will be doing it in all the rest of these states immediately thereafter. There is no more Republican v Democrat. Now it is very much the smug arrogant bastard insiders versus grassroots gun owners. That's the battle lines here. When you see headlines like this with the governor, the anti-gun, blackface, racist gun control Democrat governor, praising the Republican Senate Majority Leader, calling his bill, he's very pleased with his bill. That's where we're at. You can't trust parties, you can't trust these partisan juices anymore. These people are cowards, they're utter cowards. And they're going to cower in fear in the face of this governor unless gun owners stand up and roar back and say, don't you dare. So call the numbers you've seen that Ben read off, he's getting, reading off again right now, maybe. If you haven't yet got the numbers, guys, we'll give them to you again here in a moment. But call, call, call Senate Leader Normant and tell him to stop his attack on gun owners, to, I don't know, maybe grow a pair, and to fight for gun owners. Do you have the numbers handy?
Phone number here, and it's pinned in the comments section as well, but if you can't find it, it's 804-698-7503. If you can't reach him there, call him at 757-259-7810. And you know, all these people standing over there going, oh, save our children, you guys are brutes. You're so mean, you're so terrible. This has nothing to do with public safety. This has nothing to do with school safety. This has nothing to do with so-called mass shootings all across America. Every 28 seconds, this is a total leftist communist agenda being advanced right here in our America, our country. That is what this is all about. This is about annihilating our most basic right of self-defense, taking away our guns so that they can do, well, what have all these other countries done? Look it around, look at China, look at all these different countries. Bad things happen, Venezuela, bad things happen to the people. When their firearms are taken away, this is still the freest land in the world, and we have got to fight if we're going to keep it that way. Call the phone numbers, call those numbers. Tell the Senate Majority Leader Tommy Normant to shut down this gun control and do not pass anything. If he goes, what bill are you talking about specifically? Say all of them, all of them, no bills, none. Because they don't have the guts to push pro-gun legislation here. So you want every single bill that pertains to the Second Amendment shut down. And I don't care if you live in California, I don't care if you live in Texas, I don't care if you live in New York. This, guys, is the fight for freedom right now in America. Because this happens all the time, when a state passes gun control, all the other states, you hear it from the anti-gun lawmakers, they sit down to present their red flag gun seizure bill, and they go, aw, the lovely red state of Florida passed all this gun control. Surely we can pass it too. If Virginia passes gun control with a Republican House and Senate, every state in the nation is on a chopping block. They're going to go, look, Republicans in Virginia, they saw the light and they passed all this gun control. Surely we can do it in X, Y, or Z state. It doesn't matter where you live. Call him and tell him to shut this stuff down. Because, guys, our future depends on it, our children's future, our children's children are depending on us to preserve this, the last great hope in the world of self-defense, of freedom, and of personal, personal safety, personal safety, guys. Call the phone numbers, listen to them scream, listen to them scream for gun control. Take action now.
If the governor, I mean, the reason why we're here, Ben, in case you guys aren't from Virginia, I don't know what's going on, is that 12 people were killed in Virginia in a gun-free zone. They were killed in a gun-free zone. And so, like Ben said, the freedom that they're trying to destroy is the freedom to have any chance of fighting back. If Governor Northam was serious about being concerned with the victims of gun violence, Ben, he would have got down on his knees and humbly apologized to this state for an act for allowing legislation to remain on the books to disarm those 12 wonderful people. They couldn't fight back because Northam's, the policies that Northam has allowed to remain in effect were ineffective, they were disarmed, they were helpless. And that is exactly how socialist dictators, and that's what this guy is, make no mistake, that's exactly how these kind of guys want the dirty hairy unwashed. They want us unarmed, helpless, vulnerable, and unable to defend ourselves. And again, don't forget, this is not just Northam and his war. This is Republican-backed gun control. Chris is looking, pulling an article behind the camera right now. Earlier this year, in the state, it's on page two or three, in the state Capitol, here where we're at right now, Republicans, Republicans voted in favor of red flag gun seizures in committee. You got his name?
Glenn Stuvar.
Glenn Stuvar, Republican Senator Glenn Stuvar voted for Northam's gun control agenda. And that was before a special session, that was before we had national media here, that was before we had busloads of Bloomberg radical nutjobs here. So if they couldn't stand up then, in January, when relatively few people were watching, do we have any comfort or any trust they're going to stand up now? Hell no. They have to hear from you guys now. And the one, the primary number to call is the one that Ben gave you guys, because, because Normant is in charge. Normant and Cox, the House of Delegates, Speaker, those are the two guys who will decide everything. Now let's be clear, what their, what their authority is, the governor has the authority to call a special session. These guys have the authority to gabble in and say, F you, Mr. Governor, and gabble out. They don't have to debate bills, they don't have to entertain gun control, they don't have to stab us in the back. They could pass pro-gun bills, how about that, Ben? What if they pass freaking constitutional carry? So it's all in the hands of Speaker Cox and, and Mr. Norman. They have to hear from you guys immediately, immediately.
To lay this out just a little bit more for you, here's why this is happening right now. Again, like Aaron said, in Virginia, just Virginia, their election, their general election is this November, not 2020, it's 2019. And so here's what happens. The Democrats, Democrats go, Northam here, he goes, we are going to push this agenda, and if Republicans don't acquiesce, we're going to kick them all out of office and take over these majorities in November, right? That's what they say, that's what this is about. It's got nothing to do with safety. That guy couldn't give a rat's ass less about children, safety, or lives lost. I mean, he's a butcher of the highest order. And so what's happening instead? And so you would think, if they had any spine, if they cared at all about freedom, the Republicans would say, you know what? We're going to call your bluff, we're going to shove this gun control down your throat, and our people, the gun owners, are going to come out in November, and they're going to reelect us. We're going to maintain our majorities here, we're going to fight for the Second Amendment, and we're going to call your bluff, Northam. That's what they should do, that's what they won't do. Instead, the Republicans are sitting there going, oh, man, if we don't pass some kind of gun control, we might, we might lose our seats. You're going to lose it anyway, you're going to lose it. If you stab gun owners in the back, it's a recipe for loss. I'm from Minnesota, okay? We know it all too well, what weak Republicans look like, and how they get the boot at election time when they stab gun owners in the back. This is politics, 100%, got nothing to do with safety. And that's why these Republicans need a swift kick in the backside to shut down this gun control instead of doing the crap they're doing here.
You said the whole, you said it all, Ben.
Unbelievable.
These people just, they don't quit, they're not going to quit. And we cannot stop either of these guys, will not ever be content. They'll never be, I mean, 12 people already died because of this gun control. 12 people died because gun-free zone policies left them disarmed. Do they pause for a moment? Hell no, they're going to double down, now they want to take all your AR-15s, all your Mags over 10 rounds, red flag gun seizures, statewide gun registries, and on and on and on and on it goes. I mean, just last week, right here in Richmond, the city council passed a citywide ban on firearms, permits or not, in all city property. It's, it is a war. They're not going to stop, they're not going to give up. I mean, look at, look at New York, look at New York. If you want to, if you want to see, you know, what happens, you know, once they pass a massive gun control bill, like the SAFE Act in 2013, they didn't pause for a moment, they didn't pause for a moment. They go on and on and on, and gun owners have got to fight back, we've got to be nastier. We have to be more aggressive. We can't let these Republicans, these pathetic, spineless, spineless, weak people betray our freedom. Our children, our, and this is, I mean, I'm from Iowa, we're a young state. We're a young, that's where I was born. This is a, this is a, this is the bastion of our country. If we don't support freedom, if we don't protect and defend freedom here, where's it going to be defended? Where's it going to stop? It has to stop here in Virginia.
Yeah, Patty wants to know, where are the gun owners of Virginia? There's a bunch of gun owners here, there's a bunch here. But like Aaron said, the 1980s model of fighting for the Second Amendment needs to be kicked to the curb and it needs to die. The left is kicking our teeth in, they're destroying the Second Amendment all over the country, and we got to stop this. Well, as long as I wear, you know, the right khaki pants and, and don't carry my gun open carry, people will think I'm reasonable.
Chris, show them a crowd.
Oh, my gosh. Hey, thanks Bloomberg. Michael Bloomberg-funded anti-gun radicals, dozens and dozens of them. Look at them, look at them piling in here. Look at this. Radical leftists, leftists, communists, Marxists. They hate America, they hate freedom, they hate the Second Amendment, and they hate that you own guns that they haven't taken yet. That's why they're here, that's why they're fighting. But that's why we are here, that's why we are fighting. We are not going to roll over, we are not going to give this up. Look at them, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of them over there, screaming, yelling, shouting. Pathetic, pathetic. Make the phone calls, make the phone calls. If you're not a member of the American Firearms Coalition, I can tell you, these things will never go by without us fighting here for you. Go to joinafc.org, become a member of the American Firearms Coalition. Help us fund this fight. Because again, those people, they didn't buy those red shirts, they didn't buy those red shirts. They were doled out in boxes from Michael Bloomberg paid people. They didn't pay for the gas to get here.
That's right. I wish we could have showed you just a few moments ago, we were too busy interacting with the state police and stuff, but they had buses literally show up right over there, you know, in the, in the front ends of the buses, lower down, because they're all air ride and everything, and, and out pour a bunch of these, a bunch of these red shirt radicals. They don't have to, they don't have to buy the shirts, they don't have to buy the gas. Heck, we've been in a lot of state legislatures all over America where they pass around a slip for everybody who is there for reimbursements for coming and showing up. These, this is a paid army, this is a mercenary army that has been hired to try to destroy freedom in this country. Like, like Ben's been talking about, Aaron's been talking about, the most important thing we can be doing today, that you guys can be doing today. We don't care where you live, we don't care where you live, but this Republican Senate Majority Leader, Normant, he has got to hear from people all over America today how nasty this is, how betrayals like this will not be tolerated. And that's the most important thing. I, I think I pinned it in the comments section, folks, there's two phone numbers there. I don't have it on my phone right now. But please take advantage of those phone numbers right now and call that Senate Majority Leader's office and make that sucker glow.
Yeah, yeah. Julia's saying, when busloads of paid gun-grabbing protesters show up for a rally, it unfairly creates a one-sided event pushing for gun control. It's exactly what's happening right here. Chris, you got something going on over there? And that's, that's what's happening here. People are saying, oh, let's see, who, Patty says, it's maddening that they bus them in. It's just maddening. And it says that gun owners need to make time for events, yada, yada. If you can't make it, wherever you are, help us fight for you. Become a member. If you're not, if you're already a member, make a contribution. make a contribution. With the finances you entrust to us, we can run mail, we can run ads, we can run radio. Yeah, we, we have been, we are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's, let's put this into perspective right now. There is tens of thousands of pieces of direct mail that have landed all across the beautiful state of Virginia, all up and down the Shenandoah Valley, from the Lynchburg area.
Tell them who paid for it.
And guess who paid for it? Guess who paid for it? This guy.
The three of us paid for this mail.
This guy and that guy.
We have 15 kids, between the three of us. So for all the trolls and the haters who are watching, and we know, God knows, there's haters in all different states watching right now, Colorado, Virginia, Iowa, who are sitting here saying that these guys are just, all it's just all talk. We just wrote out a check of our own personal funds to blanket Virginia in mobilization mail, trying desperately to stop this. We'll see if we're successful. But that, that's who paid for it.
Yep. Go to the americanfirearmscoalition.org, americanfirearmscoalition.org. Make a contribution. Like we said, how many gun rights organizations are there? Tons, so many. Where are they? Where are they? They're not here. They're not here fighting for gun owners. The American Firearms Coalition is. That's what we do. And we need your help to cover the cost of these massive programs that we're running right now because these people are gonna do everything they can do to ramrod this stuff through the Capitol, which is right over here, by the way. That's where it's all gonna take place. That's where it's all gonna take place, right there. And these Republicans, again, these Republicans, they don't have the spine to stand up against this stuff. They've already said, uh-uh, ain't gonna happen. We're gonna introduce a lot of gun control bills. We'll find some bipartisan solutions, uh, to the issue of public safety. That's the crap they say when they go, give me your guns. Give them, give them. Oh, we'll do a gun buyback. They were never your guns to buy back to begin with. They were ours as Americans.
Let, let me tell you how the strategy works for the radicalized left, these leftist lying commie mommies and the organizations and the billionaires behind them. This is what they do. They introduce all these bills. So they have a universal background checks bill. They have a red flag gun confiscation bill. They have a, a one gun a month bill. They have all these different gun control bills. And they press the flesh 100%, okay? And they do that, they want to score a victory. The problem is, and this has been this way for so long, the problem is, at the end of the day, they are usually the ones sitting in the hotel rooms celebrating the fact that they got 10% of our freedoms taken away from us. And meanwhile, dumb Republicans like the Senate Majority Leader are standing there saying, hey, look at us. We did a good job. We only lost 10% of our gun rights. And folks, that is a guaranteed way of losing every single time.
Yeah. 10% every year, 10 years, you don't have any Second Amendment rights left. And that's where we are in Virginia. That's where we are in Minnesota. That's where we are in states all across America. And we need your help to get this stuff shut down. Let's show these people. What are they holding up there? Signs. I wonder how far we can walk over here. Look at them. Hundreds. Swing over here, watch. Look at them. Well, that's what I'm wondering. Not only are there a bunch of lying commie mommies over there, there are some world-class soyboys. I'm talking like estrogen from the milk jug over there screaming for gun control and looking at us, big bearded Santa Claus guys going, oh, you people in your Second Amendment are so disgusting. These people are pathetic. They're terrible people. They hate freedom and they don't have any logic. They have no rationality. They have no ability. They have no ability to say, oh, well, maybe if the 12 people who were killed in the Virginia Beach shooting had firearms, they wouldn't have been shot. Now, that stuff doesn't matter, guys. We're relocating a little bit here. Yeah, this is what I was wanting. We can stay on this side? All right, guys. There. A little closer view because they won't, all right. They won't let us get close. They won't let us get close, see? Freedom of speech and all that doesn't qualify around here. How about that? Look at them. Look at them. Every one of these people would see you disarmed, would see you totally unable to protect your wives, your children, your husbands, your spouses, your neighbors, your beautiful communities all across America. These people want the Second Amendment totally obliterated. That's why we're here fighting this stuff 100%.
And make no mistake about it, these are the same monsters who believe in post-birth abortion. The Governor Ralph Northam, just remember this, he's the guy who said that we should be able to let babies be delivered, wrap them up, make sure they're comfortable, and then make a decision about whether or not they get to live or die. So keep that in mind throughout this entire process. Half of this is Northam trying to reinvent himself with the radical left for some future senate run or something like that. But these people don't care. They don't care about public safety. They don't care about kids. If they did, they'd be opposing Governor Northam's post-birth abortion agenda. They'd be talking about that up here? No, they're not talking about that. They're talking about disarming, law-abiding, freedom-loving, God-fearing, American patriots like you and like me and us.
Yeah. It's unbelievable. It's unbelievable. For those of you just tuning in, we're live, we're live in Richmond, Virginia, where today at 12 noon, a special session of the Virginia Legislature is kicking off, General Assembly, for the sole purpose of passing gun control. Republican leadership, Senate Majority Leader Tommy Norman. Lion Tommy, Lion Tommy, Norman.
Tommy, Tommy.
Standing up there saying, we're gonna pass all kinds of gun control. He's introducing his own gun control bills, introduced just yesterday. Republicans have every intention of caving on the Second Amendment, of passing gun control in order to placate the radical left. And who wins out of that? Nobody. Oh, oh, look at this guy. F U D D. Look at him. Oh, look at him screaming obscenities.
He's got a coexist shirt on.
Coexist.
It's tolerance unless you're opposed to the radical communist agenda, then it's bigotry, hate and violence against conservatives. But all we gotta do is look at all, most of the, the most recent mass killings, they've all been done by registered Democrats, the vast majority of them. Unhinged radical leftism leads to this kind of stuff. We just saw it just there. Terrible stuff.
Should we slide on up there a little ways? Apparently they don't want you.
I think it's over.
Apparently they don't want you guys to see what's going on over there. So they, they parked their little scooter right here and started revving it up. Look at this. Unreal. Like, looks like Chris said, everybody knows the radical left who stand there and go, we're gonna coexist. Why not coexist with gun owners? No, 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 can't coexist with the Second Amendment? How about that? These guys, a bunch of jokers over here. Bunch of jokers. No, everybody knows the left is radically violent. You know, at least in Minnesota, there's a lot of bad things in Minnesota when it comes to politics. But the security guards at the Capitol, world-class, are the best people. They love freedom as much as we do. Some of these. Who even knows? Who even knows? March for our lives. Look at these people. Liberals. There's nothing worse. There's just nothing worse than radical leftist liberals. No rationality. Just take the guns, take the guns, take the guns, take the guns.
And abort the babies, abort the babies.
We say hell, no. Absolutely not. Go to joinafc.org, become a member of the American Firearms Coalition. We are gonna be talking with dozens and dozens of lawmakers on your behalf, telling them to shut down this gun control, to vote no, to ram this stuff down Governor Blackface Northam's throat. I wonder if he asks these people, do you like blackface? I mean, because if you're radical leftist liberals, I mean, isn't that, isn't that racist? Isn't your governor racist? Or do we just forget all that stuff all of a sudden? Hey, it's the left. It's the left. That's how this stuff works.
That's exactly it. And we've, we've said that many times already in this video. This is Governor Northam trying to get his liberal leftist base to forget the fact, um, that he's a racist. And he's doing it by trying to co-opt the entire gun control movement. And he's doing that by peddling on the blood of innocent people who couldn't defend themselves, who died in gun-free zones at the hands of murderers who broke every law known to man, including, yeah. So, um, they, they, it's not about public safety at all.
No, absolutely not. Was it, wasn't it, wasn't it Obama's Chief of Staff who said, never let a crisis go to waste, right? Hey, some people die. Some people die because of radical leftists. And these people start doing backflips. They couldn't be more excited. Hey, there's dead people? Now we can go after the Second Amendment. Now we can destroy gun rights. They're unhinged. They're unhinged.
There he goes. Governor Blackface or Governor Northam, why is it that you're trying to force gun control on the people when gun control's roots are based in racism? You have anything to say about that?
Gun-free zones killed 12 people in Virginia Beach. Why do you wanna expand gun-free zones?
Yeah, why, why don't you talk about that in your comments? The fact that all these people are getting killed in gun-free zones. Why aren't you asking the legislature
That's up to the Pope.
to outlaw gun-free zones? Something that can actually save lives? Huh? Got anything to say?
Very convenient time and for sure your career is on the backs of gun owners and dead Virginians.
Terrible shame. Very shameful conduct as a governor, that's for sure.
The state used to stand for freedom, sir.
Nothing? Hey, how about any of you staffers? Any of you staffers have an intelligent word to say?
You'll talk to the paid for Bloomberg hacks, you won't talk to us?
Yeah. How, what kind of pack checks are you gonna get to your campaigns or is the Democrat, uh, Republican or Democrat Committee is gonna get?
Bloomberg money. Got it right here. What an embarrassment, sir. Shameful. Appreciate it, guys. We're being, we're being careful.
Dirtbag, he says?
No.
No, yeah.
There we go.
There it is, folks.
Mr. Rollin?
There it is.
You see that? Everybody see that?
When we said you can't fight like you did in the 90s trying to stop gun control, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
These people hound conservatives to no end. They hound the gun owners to no end. You try and talk to them face to face, cowards, sniveling little bastards who wanna take away your freedom, disarm you, and they're too scared to even say anything when they're asked about it. What a joke. We are not getting down on our knees and begging a tyrant like Governor Northam to be lenient upon us and only pass some form of gun control. We're gonna shut this down with everyone, whatever we can do, whatever we can do. Go to americanfirearmscoalition.org. There's nobody on the ground fighting this stuff like the American Firearms Coalition. Nobody. We need you to stand with us. For those of you who just saw it, Governor Blackface Northam ran like a coward. Ran like a coward.
And you, and you notice what happens when he doesn't have his friends in the corporate media there to ask him softball questions. That guy went deaf and mute like an absolute moron. Um, and you're not gonna see what happened just there.
Here goes one.
You're not gonna see what happened just there done by anybody else, folks. That's just the start of this week. We knew, you know, I'll be quite honest with you. These people down here, I mean, we've seen so many of these lefty commie mommy red shirt radicals in the last couple of months that it just doesn't like, I mean, it doesn't do much anymore. But here's, this, what just happened there is just the start. We're gonna be going here in just a little while. We're gonna be transitioning over to the building right across the street.
We're gonna find Lion Tommy, uh, Norman.
We're gonna find him. We're gonna find a lot of these key legislators.
You guys keep walking.
What's that? We cut the grass here?
Yeah.
All down here. Follow along, guys.
Share this video, guys. Share this video and show every gun owner you know what real gun rights activism looks like. You don't fight this fight behind a keyboard. You don't fight this fight, uh, just using email. You don't fight this fight doing a rally one day a year and then sitting on your ass the rest of the time. You fight like patriots. You wanna be involved in that fight, guys. Now is the time. Joinafc.org. Joinafc.org.
Look at this. This is huge. This is huge. This is Minnesota style. Minnesota style. Follow along, guys. Come with us.
I wanna give you guys an idea of what we're up, of what we're all up against here. Um, and, and again, we wanna reiterate the fact that these people, they all got dumped off right here by big, huge buses, double-decker buses. Oh, there's some, yeah, there's some of the buses down there right now. But, uh, we're gonna give you an up-close look. Hang on just a moment here, folks.
Is it a weapon or is it a deity?
Here we go. Look at this stuff. Look at this stuff right here. Look at some of their signs. It says Sandy Hook, five minutes, 154 bullets. All it would have taken was one armed teacher to walk out there and smoke Adam Lanza and the job could have been over. Over. These people, they hate freedom. They will all, they will all advocate. They, they will all advocate against arming good teachers.
Yeah, exactly. Unarmed, unarmed. These people want your firearms taken away. They want your freedom destroyed. They don't care who dies. They don't care what's happening in, in countries like Venezuela. Their citizens are being butchered in the street.
Yep.
They had their right to bear arms. Their firearms were confiscated a decade ago and they're being slaughtered in the streets. If you don't think that can happen right here in America, you've not been watching the radical left. You've not been watching. Join us. Go to joinafc.org. These people hate you. They hate your children. They hate your freedom. They hate America and they will not stop until your firearms are taken away, until you are left as defenseless as the very people they claim to care about, as those who died. They died because they were defenseless.
There's no love here. There's no peace here. You look at these people, nobody would wanna be, have them for moms. Pure bigotry unleashed. And, and anytime they hear, they hear, um, opposition, this is what happens. It's intolerance and bigotry against freedom. And if you dare open your mouth against it, they will do absolutely everything they can to shut you down.
Unbelievable.
Terrible.
I'll tell you what, my mother, my wife wouldn't be cut dead marching against our right to keep their arms.
And neither would mine. Neither would mine.
My grandmother, God bless her beautiful heart, she knows better. My grandmother's got like 40 grandkids. She would not dream of disarming her own grandchildren and taking away their ability to protect her grandchildren. These people are brainless leftists. They hate freedom. Look at this guy. Look at this guy. So if you think, so if you think we can reason with a nutbag like this, you're crazy. We can't. All we can do, all we can do is fight political force with political force. Come after these lawmakers at election time. All of this is for show. If we don't hold, these lawmakers feed to the fire when the elections come around. And right now we have Republicans, Republican Senate Majority Leader teaming up with Ralph Northam to pass gun control today. The special session kicks off today and we're here fighting for you. Hey, they're all in lines for their Bloomberg buses, Bloomberg buses. Oh, we love it. We love fighting for the Second Amendment. We love gun rights. We love it. These people, they hate it. I can't help it. Oh, they hate it. Oh, they hate it. Freedom. We love this guy. We love this guy.
What they should be talking about is eliminating gun-free zones, folks. How many mass killings have to happen in gun-free zones before legislatures like this start talking about real, real positive things that can actually save lives? They never do it. We just ask that exact same question to Governor Northam himself. Deaf and mute was his, was his constant response.
Yeah, unbelievable. These people, they scream about gang violence, gang violence they're talking about. We have that in Minneapolis in spades. That's what they're shouting about. They think, they think somehow if we pass all this gun control, that criminals, thugs, gangsters and thieves, are they gonna pass their guns over? Oh, I guess this gun's illegal now. I should go turn it into the police station. They're out of their minds. Look at Chicago. Seventy-eight people got shot in Chicago last weekend. Are these people nuts because they're nuts?
Temperature rose. What is passing any more laws going to do to the thugs and criminal class?
That's not a thing. And that's why we say begging, pleading, going around and, and getting on our knees and begging politicians to, to believe us or to vote the right way is wrong and it fails every time. Just standing here and educating, educating these people? You think you can educate these people? I can talk to one of these people for the rest of my life and I wouldn't be able to change their mind. to change their mind. All we can do is fight political force with political force. The old tactics of the 80s and 90s fighting for the Second Amendment are dead. They need to die. We cannot fight the way they did in the old days. We gotta get meaner. We gotta get nastier. We gotta fight harder. We gotta be unafraid.
And we've gotta get a lot more of us involved in this fight. So go to JoinAFC.org, sign up and become a member with us. You can see, you can see how tolerant and peace loving the radicalized left is. If you don't agree with their agenda, they will scream you down. They will flip you the bird. They will curse at you. They will do everything under the sun to try to get you shut down. And that's what they were just doing over there.
Crazy. Your people's conduct here has been. Go to AmericanFirearmsCoalition.org. Join the thousands of members of the American Firearms Coalition. Get on board, fight with us. We're fighting for you live in Richmond, Virginia, where today at 12 noon, Governor Northam is going to try to ram through red flag gun seizure legislation, universal gun registration, a one gun a month, totally destroying Virginia's preemption law, making it so any, any city, any town can annihilate the Second Amendment, town by town? It's unbelievable. It's unreal what they're trying to do here and we need your help to fight back. Share this video. Get your family and friends on board.
Share, share, share this video.
Get it around, guys. Look at them. Oh, the buses, the buses are taken away little bit at a time. These people hate freedom. They couldn't give a rat's less if we had the right to protect ourselves or not. They don't. And like I say, what about my boys? What about my boys? I got two little boys.
I've got four girls and three boys. Who's gonna take care of them if these people are successful at disarming this state and this country?
Oh, no answer to that.
None?
No answer to that.
I just asked that to four women over here. She's like, they're already getting killed. I'm like, ma'am, you're absolutely wrong. We defend our kids and we defend them with guns if we have to.
Absolutely. Absol- my wife carries a gun. I carry a gun. We are well aware that it is our responsibility to protect our lives, our children's lives and those of the beautiful communities that we live in. These people, they annihilate the Second Amendment. What happens? Nothing. You can't carry a cop in your pocket, folks.
No amount of nanny state will ever achieve the anti-gun utopia that they sit here and sell like crap. Absolutely not. Venezuela, Russia, look at all these countries that after they disarm the population, millions of people die.
And again, if you don't think it can happen here, it can. It can. I know Venezuela seems a long ways away. You probably don't know any Venezuelans, but a decade ago, they had firearms. Now they are a socialist nightmare country and their citizens are being slaughtered in the street. They're being slaughtered in the street. Are we moving, guys? Are we moving? Hey, you're very welcome. You're very welcome. Hey, there's some patriots here. There's some patriots. There's some great people here and there's a lot of nasty people here. Nasty, nasty people. Guys, for those of you just checking in, Governor Northam, not 200 feet away, just a couple hundred feet away, stood up there and said, we are gonna ram this gun control through. We are gonna pass this gun control agenda because, uh, don't tell anybody, but I accidentally wore blackface back in the day and I'm kind of a racist, but I don't really want anybody to know that. So maybe we can pass some gun control real quick and everybody will forget about it. This, this Northam. Leftists. Radical leftists.
I love your rhetoric out here.
Thanks. Hey, look, this guy is carrying a mic and he's wearing a gun. We like that. We like that.
He is not fake news. Not fake news.
Not fake news. What's going on, man?
I wanted to ask, uh, what brings you down here to the capital of Virginia?
Well, this special session where Governor Northam's trying to ram through more gun control in this state and possibly choke down and would destroy the Second Amendment here. And we're here on behalf of our members and supporters of the American Firearms Coalition to tell him and his Republican colleagues who are backing this stuff and introducing gun control bills themselves, that gun owners are not sitting this out. We're not rolling over. We're not gonna take it and we're not giving up our guns.
Yeah, thank you for, uh, the rallies coming up in a few hours here. Uh, I think it's great to go do a show of support. Uh, I think a lot of liberties can die when people kind of remain quiet and don't do anything proactive about it. I think our Virginia state motto is Sixten for Tyrannus. Right? I don't think anyone who is celebrating the Fourth of July realizes that's a pro-gun holiday.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Oh, I totally agree. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a holiday that was born on the backs of patriots carrying guns. That's what it was. We're only America because we have firearms.
Right.
That's the only reason we exist. It's the only way it happened.
Right. There was an attack in Petersburg, a knife attack a few days ago with a knife. Don't you think this would be a powerful common sense?
There's gonna be a lot more in Richmond now after the city council banned firearms on taxpayer funded property. I mean, we all know this. Every time gun control is enacted, whether it's a one gun a month scheme, universal background checks, it only benefits criminals. Because the law abiding people, people like us, we're the only people who will obey it. So everybody here knows that. There's no confusion here. These lines are clear. These, these radical socialists want to gut and stuff our freedom. It's not about safety, not at all.
Right. If they don't like guns, move to California, move to North Korea.
Yeah, move to Venezuela. They'd love to butcher you there.
Absolutely. Go to, go to England where you can't even have scissors now unless you want to be arrested.
Yeah, exactly.
I find like, uh, these kind of laws kind of piggyback on another over time, over generations. And then eventually it's like.
That's right.
Our taxes, where it used to be like 2%, people thought that was tyrannicals. Now it's 35 to nearly half your income. It's just, uh, one common says gun law and then it's just really about controlling what you can have to means to protect yourself.
Absolutely. I mean, they take it one step at a time and that's why we take every bill, whether it's a red flag gun seizure bill, uh, whether it's universal gun registration, or whether it's something as simple as one gun a month. Every gun control bill is radical gun control. We fight every gun control bill the same because as you said, they piggyback on top of each other. And if they get one thing, next year they'll get something else and they'll get something else. And we're just here to say absolutely hell no.
Well, we got time for it, folks. Thanks a lot.
Thanks for coming out.
You bet, man. Have a nice one. Who are they screaming at over there, do we know?
We're gonna bring you a little bit closer in here, folks, let you guys see what's going on, so.
You hear this? Let this be a rallying cry. Republicans, grow some cojones, stand up and stop this gun control because you know what? Gun owners, remember November 2. Gun owners, vote 2. What do you have, guys? Guys, follow along. Look at them. Scan up that road. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of anti-gun radical leftists here to destroy the Second Amendment, take away your firearms. And there's always, there's always a couple goobers. Look at that goober. We got a goober over here. He thinks it's funny. He thinks, he thinks it's, nah, I don't think so. Nah, I don't think so. It's the Brady Bunch. Moms Demand Action, Everytown for Gun Safety, that guy I knew, I recognize a goober. I can see a goober anywhere. Yeah. Look at this guy. Here, this guy. This guy, he likes to wear his hair like he's some kind of old time patriot, but well, he ain't no patriot, not at all. Look at these people. Hundreds and hundreds, probably a thousand, probably more. Packed up, hundreds of them, demanding gun control, demanding passage of radical gun control legislation. They want red flag gun seizures. They want universal gun registration. They want to make it so you only buy one firearm a month and curse them. They're indoctrinating our kids. Oh, man. I thought you were laughing.
We found one. We found one.
I apologize. Are you really pro-gun? Are you no compromise?
I want people, I want to hear what the message is. I don't want, I don't want all the yelling. I want to know what, but nobody can clearly tell me what.
No, that's all right.
All I hear is shouting.
Well, we'll tell you what that, what that was very simple. They want to take away every AR-15 in the state. I was just gonna recap what we're doing here. No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead. I just, I worked down the street and I wanted to see what all the commotion was about.
Oh, you worked down the street. Oh, that means you're a cap.
I mean, if you, if you guys missed, if you missed the earlier F-bombs we're getting from the guy with the coexist shirt, that was one of the more lighthearted moments. Everybody's about coexisting. Everybody's about dialogue. Everybody's about trying to like have an open discussion until you say, I support the Second Amendment. Then all of a sudden, they lose their minds. They want to take away your freedom and they're, all of a sudden, they're screaming crazy fascists. And that's who these people are out here. Look at this. These are not, these are not like gentle people who are trying to make. Their freedom. They want to destroy the Second Amendment. They want to move here and they want to move on and they want to do it in North Carolina. They want to do it in Pennsylvania. They want to do it in Ohio and they want to keep spreading that out west. I have your phone. And, and everywhere they can. This agenda is limitless.
Yeah.
They're not gonna stop just because they pass one bill. And Chris made a good point. If you guys missed that 10 minutes, I'm gonna repeat it right now. The way these people work is not an accident. They, they seem crazy, but their leadership is not. So what they do is they introduce six or seven or eight or nine gun control bills and then most of them, they know are gonna die for now, but they're gonna pass one or two of them. And then they win. They win and we lose freedom. And if they repeat that two or three times, they're gonna get their entire agenda passed. And gun owners cannot accept these little piecemeal victories. We have got to stop everything and ram pro-gun bills down their throat.
Yep. In the description of this video, pinned in the comment section is the phone number for Senate Majority Leader Tommy Norman. Tommy Norman, call him. Call him and tell him to stop pushing gun control with Governor Blackface. Stop doing it. And these people, it's like Aaron said, they're gonna go from state to state. Of course they would. They're paid. They're paid to be here. These people are paid to be here. They're paid activists. Paid activists. Oh, look at this guy. You are everything wrong with America. You are everything wrong with America. Shame on this guy. My grandfather wouldn't be caught dead out here doing what this guy's doing. Wouldn't be caught dead. He knows better than that. And then we have our children. Our children. By the way, if your kids are in those schools being taught this garbage, yank them. Pull them out. They're being taught to hate their country, to hate the founding fathers.
There.
They're indoctrinating our children. They're making them hate our founding fathers, hate the founding principles of our nation, hate our freedoms. And then they drag them out here, paid for in Bloomberg funded buses, saying, line them up here to push for gun control. It's disgusting. We gotta shut it down. Go to JoinAFC.org, become a member of the American Firearms Coalition. Make a contribution and help us fight for gun owners here in Richmond, Virginia.
If you think, guys, for a moment, that these weak-kneed loser Republican leadership members like Lion Tommy Norman, Norman's office told us five days ago, they were doing no gun control. Five days later, the eve of special session, they drop in a major gun control bill to ban all guns in public buildings and make it a felony offense. And so if we, but if you guys think that these crazy radicals are gonna be stopped by these weak-kneed losers like Norman, that's not correct. You have to call them. You have to email them. You have to Facebook them. You have to pour on the pressure and make sure that these Republican leaders know that if they betray our freedom, if they betray the Second Amendment, we will not only not support them in November, we will personally, as gun owners, work to make sure they pay a price if they betray our freedom. Grassroots activism like this has stopped radical gun control in Minnesota this year. It has so far stopped radical gun control in Pennsylvania this year. The only way to combat these crazy bastards is with overwhelming grassroots pressure. If you can't be here today, that's okay. Your phone call, your email, your Facebook message, that is the key. Telling these lawmakers, they will pay a price if they betray our freedom today or anytime in the special session. Make your phone calls today. The number is posted in the comment section and call Lion Tommy Norman and tell him to stand up.
We keep hearing this word tolerance and discussion. But what we are seeing here is outright political violence by the radical left. This is not a discussion. This is political violence. The radical left has always excelled at doing this stuff. They have always been good at this stuff, but they are hoping that they can, that they can get enough people out here and stir up enough controversy that they make, the politicians in that building right there make them all scared enough to bow the knee.
And they might do it. They're already talking about it. Norman's bill, they, they might do it. You can, we cannot trust these people.
And just look at all the doxing that's going on. Everywhere you look, folks, everywhere you look, the doxing committee is in full force. They're doing absolutely everything they can, absolutely everything they can to try to intimidate us into getting to leaving. And I tell you what, it'll be a cold day in hell before they can dox me out of this place.
You guys like this? You want to be involved in this fight? We need your help, guys. Go to join. You gotta go to JoinAFC.org. Can you view our lines for us? Maybe he can, maybe he can view our lines for us. What a loser. What a loser. I mean, this was a state, this is a state that was born in freedom. Our, some of our best presidents came from this state. These people came from this state. Freedom started in many regards when it comes to the Second Amendment right here. And we have got to make sure we don't lose our right to keep and bear arms in this state or any other. And thankfully, we have some troopers here who are gonna push some psychos back a little bit.
Kinda nice.
You know, if we, if we talk about these people at all, if we got in their face, we'd be pulled out of here immediately.
Yeah.
But we can be surrounded 500 to 300 and that's just how these folks roll. They're mob mentality fascists.
Probably all day.
They don't care about the Second Amendment. They want to destroy your freedom. Look at them. They're not talking about reasonable gun control.
They hate freedom. They hate your children. They hate the Second Amendment. Who's going to protect my boys? Who's going to protect my boys? If they take away the Second Amendment? Which one?
Who's going to do it? Who's going to do it?
Disarm hate. You know, they hate us. They screaming about hate now. They're violent, radical violent leftists. You can't reason with them. You can only defeat them at election time. Join us. Go to joinAFC.org. Join the American Firearms Coalition. We are the ones who have the balls to come right in the middle of this mob, mob, and fight on behalf of gun owners. Fight for the Second Amendment. Fight for your gun rights. Join us. Stand with us today as we try to defeat Governor Blackface's radical gun control agenda. Now, you guys, the one thing, the one thing that we like about events like this is that it really pulls, it pulls the wool off of everybody's eyes. And it lets everybody see just exactly the nature of the beast that we are up against here. These people are intolerant completely. They have no tolerance. And at events like this, you can finally see the anti-gun enemy for what they really are. And that is hate America leftists who want to disarm the law-abiding, God-fearing, freedom-loving moms and dads all across this country who wake up every day and put on that Glock 19 or that Glock 43 so that they can defend themselves and their families and their loved ones. These people, if they cared, if they cared, they'd be talking about passing a repealer on gun-free zones. They'd be talking about opening up the gun laws. They'd be talking about arming teachers so that teachers could defend our innocent little kids. But they're not. They're not. Because their agenda is about disarming America. Plain and simple. They don't care about public safety. It's not about public safety. It is about a total political agenda. The agenda is not for you. It's to destroy our most cherished freedoms. Our founding fathers were wise. They were wise men. And they knew that the only way this beautiful nation could possibly remain free is if its people had the ability as individuals to protect themselves and their loved ones. If we lose that, we lose everything. We lose everything. Stand and fight. Put money behind your anger. Stand up for the American Firearms Coalition. Become a member. Make a contribution. Help us fight for you. Help us fight for gun owners here in Richmond. This guy's a total, this guy's a lunatic. I swear, I've seen him at the Capitol in Minnesota like 30 times. This guy lives, this guy still lives in his mom's basement. She's an old lady now. But he lives in his mom's basement. It's a true story. I'm sure it's true. He plays video games. He loves shoot'em up games. But then he comes out here and protests against the Second Amendment. It's wild, wild. Shame on you. Shame on you. Shame on you for trying to take away my ability. You like that?
Right here, right here. Coming through the sidewalk.
Sidewalk to the side.
Step one foot on the sidewalk and we're good. These people hate you. They hate you. They hate the fact that you have firearms that they haven't taken. Shame on them for coming out here and spitting in the face of our founding fathers. Shame on them for spitting in the face of my wife and my children. Those who I need to protect. It's my duty to defend. It's your duty to defend your own. Shame on them for coming out here and attacking our rights to keeping bare arms. Go to joinAFC.org and become a member. Share this video. Make it viral. If you're in any of those big groups, any of those big Facebook groups, the Trump groups, share this live video. Share this video all over the place. Hold on, guys. We're probably moving a little bit here. Shame on you. Shame on you. Why won't you coexist with gun owners? You're wearing a coexist shirt.
I went to Vietnam to fight.
Why, why won't you coexist with gun owners?
Shame, shame on you. We're going to keep a bubble. Where are we sliding?
We tried. He called us idiots. Nut job.
Oh, yeah. No, you did not. You're out of your mind.
Hey, to the side, to the side. Let's go.
Right here, we're good. Folks, it's crazy out here. If you haven't seen this, about an hour ago, Chris and I and Ben confronted Governor Blackface, surrounded by armed security, surrounded by political handlers. And we asked him, when are you going to apologize?
We're moving. Feel like a pinball machine, but hey, we made it.
How about right here?
Get too close. Yeah, we have to separate somebody. We don't want to get.
All right, all right. Stay on this side.
So Governor Northam is out here, surrounded by security. And we said, you're a disgrace for a governor. A disgrace. And you're surrounded by security. And now you are going to try to disarm more Virginians and make it a felony offense for us to carry firearms in government buildings? What a hypocrite. What a disgrace. But he is backed up by screaming hordes of Bloomberg-funded psychos who are totally irrational. They're wearing their coexist shirts and they're saying, F you. I mean, these people potty mouths and just pathetic.
They have stickers on their shirts that say, no more AR-15s. I mean, I, I have one of those at my house to make sure that I can adequately defend myself and my family if I'm ever forced to. They preach tolerance. They say, nobody wants to take away your guns. And then the one woman was just saying, we hate guns. We hate guns. Well, if they hate them and they don't want to take, it just doesn't make any sense, of course. That's the anti-gun position. There is no common sense here. It's a foundation of sand. There's no common sense about it. These people wearing orange, it's just a disgrace to America.
You know, in many ways, these people are more consistent with their ideology than these weak-kneed Republicans are in the Capitol. These people are no compromise, but we have to be no compromise as well. And instead, we have Republican Senator Normans, Republican Majority Leader filing gun control. So I mean, it's kind of embarrassing to say it, Chris, but I just wish the Republican leaders would act a fraction as consistent as these crazy gun grabbers are.
It's a nationwide organization.
The American Firearms Coalition. Do you not hear that?
We need to find some sidewalk to get on it.
We need everybody off the street.
Okay, all right. We just get behind these barriers. We were told by him. We're not trying to be in trouble. So where do you want us to be exactly?
He just. Where are you going?
Sidewalk.
He just said, okay.
He said, okay about what?
We're trying to figure out, guys, where we can stand. It's kind of chaos here. And the troopers are trying to figure out where we can be. But guys, it's crazy out here. If you're not yet a member of the American Firearms Coalition, guys, where we got to go? Go to joinAFC.org, guys, and get involved in this fight. Because these people, are they going to have troopers over here now when we go through the crowd? Jeez Louise.
They say we can't go near the crowd. And they say we can't.
Are we okay here? Are we okay here? All right, trooper says we're good here. We'll see how long this lasts.
Who's on the bus?
Probably Bloomberg. Who knows?
You see this? These people, Agal just asked me. She said, she comes up and she goes, would you guys be open to some sort of discussion and finding common ground? I said, absolutely. We'd be happy to team up and pass constitutional carry in Virginia. We'd be happy. And she goes, why don't you support some of the gun control like the NRA has supported? I said, we're not the NRA. We're way nastier. And we would never sign off on that gun control. She looked like this. It was crazy. They're psychopaths. Crazy people. Did you, did you hear what he just said, though? These people, these people, let me, let me show them to you.
They get quiet when the camera's on them.
These people just asked us, why don't we want to compromise like the NRA does? Folks, that is exactly why we formed the American Firearms Coalition. Because there is no gun right that we are willing to compromise down the tubes. Not bum stocks, not standard capacity magazines, not AR-15s. Folks, just look at the intolerance and hate from these people. Now, and when I show you these people, ask yourself, would they be a good mom or a good grandma? Would anybody want that for themselves? Look at her. Who would want her for a grandma? Huh? Huh? Who would want that? Not my beautiful kids. Terrible. Terrible. My grandparents love their grandkids so much that they carry firearms to protect them. These people would have it so that we are all disarmed and all living in a gun-free zone. That is an entire state. We're just not open to that.
I mean, guys, it's about so much more than the Second Amendment. This is a fight for America's heart and soul. These people, because we're seeing prohibition signs here. We're seeing like, you know, all kinds of crazy other organizations here. These people band together as issue organizations to crush any freedom, any way they can. Whether it's guns, whether it's A backup. We have to keep moving these people. But these guys, it's not about any one issue. They want to destroy the heritage of freedom that this country, that this state was based on.
Right here in this state.
Based on. You know, it's not about the guns, these people. It's about destroying a legacy of freedom. I mean, you mentioned our grandparents. We're brothers. I mean, I learned how to shoot on my grandfather's farm. And I imagine that most Virginians learned how to shoot on their grandfather's farm. And this is about freedom. It's about our grandchildren. It's about our Second Amendment heritage that our forefathers, Virginians, paid the price for with their blood.
Yes.
With their blood. And they are expecting us to do our job to hold the line and safeguard the freedom that we have right now for our grandchildren.
I tell you what, kids, kids should be able to, they should feel safe to go to school. They should feel safe to go to school knowing that their teachers can defend them. They should feel safe with their parents knowing that their parents can defend them. These people would love to make sure that teachers can never carry a firearm so that our innocent kids are always vulnerable. These people are sitting here chanting about the kids. They just don't care. What about my boys? What about my boys? Who's going to protect my boys if you take away my guns? What about my wife and children? Who's going to protect them? Who's going to protect my children? No, no answers? No, they don't care.
Then go through a background chant. Go through a background chant.
Hate anti-gun activists. This place is loaded with them. Loaded. Unbelievable. They come up. This guy, he comes up to me and he says, can't we just have a discussion about this? I said, you don't want to have a discussion about this. You're screaming floor votes today. You don't want to discuss this. You want to ram this stuff into law. Crazy people. What? Well, the rest of you do not. They don't want to discuss this. Because you're all screaming floor votes today? You want to pass it into law? They don't want to, they don't want to barter. And neither do we. We are not here to barter on the Second Amendment. Like I said, a lady, I don't know, lady is kind of a strong word. A few minutes ago, she asked me, she asked me and says, oh, go get me some water. I'm thirsty. Hey, she's, I think she's going to get me some water. I love it. Oh, man. Unbelievable, folks. This is unreal. I've been to a lot of major, major gun control events all across America, and this is one of the biggest. The Republicans are caving. The Senate Majority Leader's caving. We're tired of dead kids too. So stop disarming law-abiding citizens. Stop taking guns from people like us. Listen to her cussing. Hey, I talk about the purple-haired people. She's one of the purple-haired people, the ones we talk about. She cusses and swears. My grandmother would wash her mouth out with soap if she was here. I know it would happen. It would happen. They want to take away your guns. They want to take away your ability to protect your family. That's what this is all about. What else are they here for? They want a red flag gun seashirts. They want universal gun registration. All I want is for our Second Amendment rights to be protected and a bottle of water. That's all I want. That's all I want. But these people, oh, I should have brought some. Hey, you got some water? Anybody, anybody got, unopened, please. Unopened, please. Unopened, my goodness. That would be terrible. Guys, there it is. That's the Capitol. That's the Capitol, right here in Richmond, Virginia. No, we're not in Minnesota today. We're not in Ohio or Iowa. We're not at the White House today. We are in Richmond, Virginia, where a deal is being cut.
And that deal, guys, is being cut in this office right up here. This is the Senate and the House Delegate Legislative Offices right up here. We were here earlier today. No one was in there yet. But they're watching right now in that building, trying to decide with their knocking knees, trying to decide what kind of a deal they expect Virginia gun owners to tolerate. They're trying to decide right now, how much can they stab us in the back and still keep their positions in November? That's all this is about. And they have got to hear from gun owners right now. They have got to know that not only is it not a safe way to secure reelection, that you are guaranteed, guaranteed to suffer the consequences if you attack our gun rights in this special session here in Virginia. We don't play like many organizations. We're not going to be, yeah, we're not going to be, we are not going to be content if these Republicans only stop most of the gun control bills. They had damn sure better kill every gun control bill and pass pro-gun bills to send a message to these people. And if they won't send that message, then gun owners are honor-bound to send a message of our own to these people in November. of our own to these people in November. I know we have hundreds of new people watching right now, the general election is this November in Virginia, it's not next year, it's this year. And these people, these Republican lawmakers who are signing off on gun control right now with Northam, they are going to screw gun owners over if they get the chance. You know, we talked to Northam a little bit ago, guy's got his head down, hiding the entire time, ashamed, he should be ashamed, but the Republicans, the Republicans who go along with this, they should be far more ashamed if they do this. Your phone calls, your emails, that will make or break this fight guys, get involved immediately.
Yeah, and keep in mind when he's talking about how important it is that the Republican caucus lock up on this stuff, remember what the majorities here are. The Republicans hold a one-seat Republican majority in the House because of a flip of a coin and a very, very slim majority in the Senate. So all we're literally talking about here is a couple, two or three Republicans in each chamber is all it would take for this entire thing to go sideways. Folks, they've already got the governor itching to sign this stuff into law. All it takes again is that Senate Republican Majority Leader and a couple more, maybe one, and then one Republican in the House and boom, all of a sudden they got full-blown gun control here in the state of Virginia and we cannot let that happen. Folks, there's a lot of people watching right now, a lot of people who joined on in the last little while, pinned at the bottom of this video is a phone number, a couple of phone numbers to the Senate Majority Leader's office. We are asking everybody right now to call that Senate Majority Republican Leader's office and tell him to yank his gun control bill. For those of you who don't know, he came out yesterday with his own gun control bill that would make it a felony offense to carry a firearm in government-owned buildings. This is terrible stuff, but this is exactly what the Democrats wanted, this is what Northam wanted when he first called for this gun control, he wanted to create this public demand and he wanted to see if he could get a couple of suckers in the Republican caucus to introduce a gun control bill of their own. That way, they can all stand here and say, this gun control was bipartisan. So again, back to the action item here right now that you guys can do, first of all, share this video. Share, share, share this video all over your Facebook pages, start watch parties, start a watch party. If you've never done it before, it's very easy to do, just go through the steps, it takes you just a couple of minutes, start a watch party and then make those phone calls to the Senate Majority Republican Leader Tommy, what's his name Ben? Tommy Norman, call Tommy Norman and tell him, yank his gun control bill, whip his Republican caucus back into line and shut these gun control bills down. Because guess what will happen if he doesn't? He'll buy no good grace from these nut jobs that you see all over the place here, they won't cut Republicans one vote of slack if they pass this gun control and instead, he'll demotivate Republicans all over the state of Virginia and they'll all stay home in the next elections when it comes to, oh, that's just in a couple of months, a month from now. So, that's the action item folks, call, call the Senate Republican Majority Leader Tommy, Tommy Norman, the phone numbers are at the bottom of this video and tell him, yank the gun control bills, kill them all, in fact, pass a constitutional carry bill and ram it down these anti-gunners throats, that's what needs to happen here. So it's, yeah, we're gonna show you the crowd here a little bit, they're starting to filter in.
They're filtering in now to the legislature that's about to kick off in one hour.
In five minutes. And folks, you just, you just hear those chants, you hear those chants like that, I want to put this into proper context for you all, they're saying, we vote in November, you vote today, and they're lining the crosswalk here to where the politicians have to come across from the other building. What this is, is political violence in its very fundamental elemental forms. These people are good at this stuff, they're good, they are trying to browbeat, they're trying to browbeat these Republicans, especially the weak ones, they're trying to browbeat them into fear, into voting out of fear. We've talked with so many of these people here today, very few actually carry on cordial conversations, most of them are F-bombing us and doing stuff like that half the time. But you talk to them, they say, well, we just want to have a discussion, we just want to have a discussion, but yet their chant here is, vote today because we're voting in a couple of months. So, there's no discussion going on here, this is, they're trying to move the needle in their direction and quite frankly, this is exactly what the pro-gun side should be doing as well. You've got to meet political violence with equal force, gun owners should be storming mad about this kind of stuff because this translates into real lives all across the state of Virginia that will be lost the day that these people are successful at taking away our gun rights. Hey, what do you, listen to that, it's like the sound of silence for two seconds, I really like it. I don't have to shout.
Well, that's what Chris is saying here, for too long, see, it's tempting, if you don't know how politics works as a gun rights organization, it can be tempting to come up and go, alright, whoa, 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 what do you want? What do you want? Well, we'll make a deal with you, we'll trade. No, 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 the deal always ends up with a knife in gun owner's chest, gun owners lose. The American Firearms Coalition is not and will not ever be that organization, we will wade into the hordes and fight on behalf of gun owners, we will never compromise, we'll never back down, that's what we're doing here today in Richmond, Virginia. Share this video with your family and friends, get the word out, post it in your groups, become a member, go to join AFC.org, help us grow into a monster-sized organization that can take on these radical anti-gun lefties, they hate you, they hate your freedom, they hate the fact that you have guns that they haven't taken away, they want, they want our children to be left defenseless? Why do you hate our children? Why do you hate our children? Look at this guy.
No, you're lying.
Why do you hate our children so much?
My wife and my kids. No, you don't, you don't want my wife to be able to defend herself, why do you want to disarm my wife then?
Yes you do, that's what you're here for. One gun a month.
No, universal gun registration.
Out of your mouth.
You see folks, that's what happens, that's what happens, we say, okay, we'll have a discussion with you, we'll have a discussion, I think he got triggered, he got triggered, they're getting triggered, we say, we'll have a discussion with you, let's have a discussion with you, and all he does is he goes like this, la, 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 la. I mean, just terrible, terrible. All the gun control that they are proposing here has been, I mean, gun control is responsible for the vast majority of mass shootings in American history. Go ahead.
Unbelievable, they stand here and shout liar, liar, they don't even know what their own bills would do, that or he's the one lying, but they're leftists, they have no conscience, they don't care about our children. What's going on? Hold on guys. If the Republicans passed every single gun control bill that Blackface is asking for, every single one of these people would still vote against them in the November elections. Passing gun control does not buy a single vote from leftist Democrats and socialists, it doesn't buy a vote. Instead, when Republicans pass this stuff, gun owners stay home and they refuse, and as they should, they refuse to vote in radical anti-gun Republicans, they won't do it. Stand up Republicans, stand up Tommy Norman, stand up Speaker Cox, stand up against this agenda, shove it down Northam's throat, shove it down these radical leftist throat and then watch gun owners rise up and fight for you in the November elections. If you do the opposite, you're toast, politically, politically you're toast in the November elections.
And this isn't even just political theory anymore, it's political fact, we all saw what happened in Minnesota in the 2018 elections, in the, between 2016 and 2018, when House Republicans had the majority in the Minnesota State Legislature, they did nothing, they passed no pro-gun bills, what happened? Well, gun owners stayed home on November of 2018 and gave the Democrats the majority again, that's exactly what will happen here in Virginia.
It was the greatest political upheaval nationwide in Minnesota, 18 seats the Republicans lost, 18 seats and it was because they tried to pass gun control, they held hearings on gun control and they refused to pass any pro-gun legislation. They were slaughtered by the Democrats, the same thing will happen here in Virginia if these Republicans don't stand up and fight. Glorious water, it's glorious.
Tastes like freedom. I don't know what these people are drinking, it must be like red water from communist Russia or something. Yeah, Kool-Aid.
And you see the fake news is out here, you see ABC strolling around here, fake news, they don't want to talk to us, they don't want to talk to gun owners, they want to make sure that the big message gets out, that only anti-guners were here and that the entire state is united in their desire to pass gun control, it's not. On behalf of the thousands and thousands of members, so many members in Virginia, we are here on your behalf to say hell no to all of this gun control. Go to join AFC.org and next time we come, I'm bringing my own bullhorn, I'll tell you what, go to join AFC.org, become a member of the American Firearms Coalition and fight with us today.
That's a good screaming. Yeah, I'm gonna hone in on that point he was just making there, I can definitely see a bullhorn in the purchasing future of the American Firearms Coalition, that's a necessity.
Hey, you want to help us buy a bullhorn?
Yeah.
Go to AmericanFirearmsCoalition.org, anybody who donates right now, in the next 25 minutes, that money will go directly to a bullhorn for the American Firearms Coalition and the next time you see us on camera using one of those, you'll know you paid for it.
Amen, amen, yeah, and we're pretty good at it, we've actually done it a time or two, but it would be very nice to be able to sit here and, well, raise the volume just a little bit.
I gotta tell you one story though, this lady, she comes up to me and she goes, why can't we find some common ground like we do with the NRA and pass a universal background check bill? And I said, over our dead body, they're weak, they don't fight for gun owners, and I said, I'll tell you this, she goes, where are you from? I said, I'm from Minnesota, and I said, I gotta tell you, we have shut down universal gun registration in Minnesota, year after year after year after year, in 2019, we shoved it down our Democrat governor and our Democrat house's throats and you should have seen her face, I should have whipped my phone out, took a picture, her mouth just dropped open and she goes, well, and she just ran off incoherent, yes, we have defeated gun control in state after state after state with our fantastic members and supporters and with your help guys, we're fighting to stop it right here too. Aaron, you want to step in?
I was on water duty for the last five minutes guys, I've been gone for a little bit, but you know, Ben asked about helping to fund the bullhorn, I'm gonna discuss that for a moment, I mean, you know, you guys have been watching the evolution of the American Firearms Coalition over the last, what, eight, nine months now, you've seen us.
May.
Yeah, whatever, last year or so, you've seen us in Indianapolis calling out the NRA, you've seen us in Washington DC bringing a hundred plus thousand of your petitions to the White House, you've seen us in our meetings in the West Wing, you see us here today in Richmond, I mean, I'm not trying to brag, but who the hell else is fighting like this for the Second Amendment? You guys have been hearing the stories, it's every day dude, about Wayne Lepierre and the quarter million dollar suit allotments and paying for bikini girls, you know, interns' apartments nearby their headquarters.
$16,000 a month apartment.
You know, it's reckless, it's just absolutely out of control spending that is absolutely pilfering gun owners. Anybody who tries to stop Wayne Lepierre is kicked to the curb. Chris Cox, not that he was a friend, I'm not trying to mistake that at all, but when he couldn't even deny it, he got kicked out, Ali North, he survived the Iran-Contra affair, he survived congressional subcommittees, he could not survive Wayne Lepierre's grip of power at the NRA. You might think it's kind of funny, why is a pro-gun dude out here talking about this? This is what the question is for you guys as gun owners, who do we stand with? Who do we fight with? Who do we support? Because, I mean, I'm sorry, but the idea, I mean, I work in Iowa, I work in Missouri, Wyoming, other states, I get these checks Chris, I see them and it's made out for $5 and it's almost impossible to read it. And it's obviously, and there's a handwritten note sometimes that might take me half an hour to get through, it's hard to read, it's from an elderly man who is literally choosing between part of his grocery budget and $5 to help fight for the Second Amendment. These people bleed red, white and blue, just like we do, and the idea that all these people, whether they gave $5 or $5,000 or benefactor membership, whatever, that that was used to fund, you know, private airfare and a quarter million dollar Beverly Hills shopping trips, where are they here? Congress is almost in recess, if they're not already in recess, Virginia, session today, where is Wayne? This is the headquarters for heaven's sakes, these people are not fighting for you. So get involved in an organization that's not going to pull punches, we're not here to attack Democrats, we're not here to attack Republicans, we're here to attack anybody who screws with our gun rights, period. It's not about party for us, it's about freedom. If you stand for freedom, if you care about the Second Amendment, if you care about what the Second Amendment represents, how it makes America a unique, special place, a bastion of freedom, if you care about that, then stand with us. If you already have stood with us, donate again. If you haven't joined up guys, go to join AFC.org and get involved in this fight, we need more patriots who care about freedom to be involved in this fight. We having a tech problem guys, or are we good? So guys, if you can stand with us now, now is the time, you're seeing directly how your support is being used, you saw the operation in Indianapolis, you saw the airplane over the NRA's convention center, you saw us in DC, you've seen us in state capitals, you see us here today calling these people out. Guys, if you missed the video from about hour and a half ago, we confronted Ralph Northam as you walked up the stairs into the Capitol, a quiet, mute, deaf, dumb moron, moron, who could not give one reason why he was trying to crush the Second Amendment, would not apologize for helping to empower criminals with gun-free zone laws, I mean, this is what we do. If you guys like this, if you want to be involved in this, now is the time, join AFC.org. Guys, we're gonna take a little break here for a few minutes, session begins here shortly, top of the hour, noon Eastern time, so we're gonna have more information coming later on today guys, it's been a big day so far, more to come, last thing I'll ask you to do is share, share, share this video guys, more to come, stay tuned.